Welcome to the continuation of the Tuesday, January 14th, 2014 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 7:00 to discuss property acquisition/lease/purchase, which I'll talk a little bit about toward the end of our meeting in Board Communications. We have seven Board members present, none absent. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, Stand the agenda is public comments. I don't have any blue cards up here, but if there's anyone in the audience who is here to make a public comment, please wave at me, stand up, come up front. All right? We have no public comments. And next is Superintendent's Communication. Mr. Purnell.
Yes, this evening, the majority of our meeting this evening will be talking about staffing and enrollment projections for the 14-15 school year. Just to go back, the Board of Education has been trying to be very proactive and trying to get a good handle as early as possible about what our staffing numbers are and what the implications are both for RIPS and for hiring for the school year of 14-15. And so, what we are presenting to the Board and the public tonight is a preliminary staffing projections based on our best knowledge that we have at this point in time. And as we've talked about before, it is always a challenge this early in the school year to have a really accurate, dead-on kind of projection that is not going to fluctuate. But based on the information that we have right now, we have put together what we believe is a realistic staffing projection based on our enrollment numbers and based on programs and services that we offer in the district. Let me also say that, so we're clear, at this point in time, we are not increasing anything in the district. We are not decreasing, for example, class numbers. Class size, there is no change. Our projection class size from this year is how we projected for next year. We have not recommended any changes in added programs or services. This is a maintenance budget, which means we took all the assumptions of how we funded and budgeted this year, and we have just done that and rolled that over to what we believe are our numbers and our needs for the coming year with no attempt to, again, increase programs, decrease class size, all of those issues that we may want to talk about in the future. The Board asked us to come back with a maintenance budget first, and then we would have future information about how much discretionary money there was and what that would look like. So that's what you have in front of you this evening. Let me start with the enrollment projections. There are a couple of things that happen with the enrollment projections. First of all, overall, next year, we are projecting an increase of 70 students overall across the district. However, one of the big impacts that we are seeing for next year is a very large eighth grade class moving to the high school and a smaller senior class graduating. And part of what you do in projection enrollments is to take the cohort, move it up, and then apply a number for staffing for those numbers. Now, historically, beyond the simple roll-up of eighth grade classes that we know about, that we have numbers on, you also have private school students that come into our district at the ninth grade year. That averages approximately 100 students per year. So, we are seeing an eighth grade class of 38 increase plus approximately 100 students. And again, I'm saying approximately. We won't know that until they actually register in February, but it appears that we will have an increase in the ninth grade class at York of 138 students. That has significant staffing implications for York in this coming school year. And as you can see by our projection, it appears right now that we are projecting an increase of at least six staff at York to accommodate that ninth grade class that will be here next year. Most of that FTE is going to go for the basic freshman program that students walk into: social studies, reading, language arts, math, PE, and a couple of electives that students take in freshman year. But six is going to be probably the minimum amount to accommodate those students walking into the high school. So that's the implication, and you don't have high school staff there right now to accommodate that. At the same time, we do not see an increase, much of an increase, at the middle school. It's pretty much a status quo enrollment. We're projecting one FTE moving up in that projection. And then at the elementary school, same kind of thing, we're looking stable. But I want to talk about the elementary school a little bit, because the elementary school is somewhat of a puzzle for us. We saw a very low kindergarten enrollment last year, probably significantly lower than we've seen in recent years. We do not know what is going to happen to the new kindergarten enrollment class that is coming in this next year. It may be just as low, but it could be a little higher than we anticipated for this coming year. The other caveat is, we do not know how many parents chose not to attend Elmhurst Kindergarten, who took an option of going to private school or some other kindergarten entity for a full-day program, but are now going to return to Elmhurst in first grade. So, what we're, we have projected an even enrollment for the elementary based on the assumptions we see. However, we will have a better indication of what that may look like when we get done with February registration. So, what I am proposing to the Board tonight is, even though we're bringing you staffing this evening so that you can look at it, we would like to have periodic updates on our staffing coming up. And probably the first update would be the second meeting in February to the Board, because at that point, we will have the initial registration process done, and that'll be a barometer for us of just what the kindergarten numbers are going to look like and what the first grade numbers are going to look like at the elementary school. The other problem we have at the elementary school is the validity of staffing that we have experienced at the elementary school. And let me tell you why that is. When you have a limited number of teachers at each grade level, some of our smaller schools have only two sections of second grade, three sections of third grade, oftentimes, when we are trying to staff at a ratio of 26 to 1 at a class-size ratio, when you have just one more student walk in, when you are staffing that close, you are forced to then add a whole one FTE to that building. And we have seen in this district that even though we were staffing at what we thought were reasonable numbers at all grade levels in, at this time of the year, coming up in March and April, by August, you could have a building that experiences five new students coming in at two grade levels that you were already tight about, you automatically, because of only one or two students, have to add an FTE. So, we have tried to accommodate that as best we can in these projections. So, again, we're comfortable right now with the projections that we're giving you with the caveat that as we get more and more information, as we get closer to the end of this school year, when we get to the point of kindergarten registration and first grade registration and registration overall, we can update these numbers and be a little more accurate as to our projections of what is coming forward. So, that is on the general education side for staffing. So, I'm going to stop there and see if the Board has any questions about general education staffing before we get to special ed and ELL.
Margaret.
Thank you for that explanation of staffing. And I just wanted to go back to a question about the middle school staffing. And I think, I wrote down that that was going to be approximately status quo. I know there's a large eighth grade class that's leaving. Is there expected to be a large sixth grade class coming?
Yes. So, that's why the status quo. Now, what, again, where we may see the fall-off in enrollment is in the elementary. We may very well see that enrollment moving up into the elementary, if the kindergarten class is low again this year, we're going to have significant decreases over time, because those classes are going to move up, replacing larger classes. But, for example, at the high school, we believe that the high school enrollment right now will continue to grow. We'll have a drop-off and an even point after next year, but then, three years after that, we see York continuing to grow based on the cohort numbers we're seeing. And we could be up to about 3,000 students at York in four years, four to five years. So, the challenge for us is on a couple of levels to start planning for that. Number one, what is the impact on the facility if we're starting to look at that? Things like lockers, facility infrastructure at York. And number two, besides just the general education teaching, what is the impact on things like counselors, on support staff, all of those things? So, we're trying to start looking at that, knowing that that is coming in, you know, three to four to five years. So, that's the other part of that that we have to look at. And so, you're going to have kind of ups and downs. And right now, the up is in the secondary. The down seems to be at the elementary level.
Emily.
So, you talked about, in the grade school, when you're up against your numbers and one or two kids move in, how that could mess things up. I remember from one of the brown bag lunches that we had with the faculty at one of the grade schools, they talked about how the, I think they called it the transient rate, transient rate, was a lot higher now than it used to be, kids moving in and out of the district. Is that, I mean, is that your impression that it does seem to be a lot more moving in and moving out than it used to be? I mean, is that something you should or you could take into account when you are making the classes? Knowing, I mean, if it is pretty certain that there's going to be kids moving in, I mean, is that something you could rely on or no?
I have not seen a pattern that would allow me to project which buildings are more susceptible to that. It seems like we have been all over the board at all the elementary schools on that issue. So, the challenge for us always in August is to say, what number are we comfortable with that we're going to staff before the students show up, or close to a week or two weeks before we get there? And then, how much are we rolling the dice kind of to say, well, how many kids may show up in that two-week period? And again, if I get only three new kids walking into Lincoln, but all three are at the fourth grade level, and that's where I'm tight, that's where you tip. The other thing that happens is, if we move up to like the 26 on staffing for a grade level, and then halfway through the year, you are all, all of a sudden, you have three or four more kids hit that grade level, now the class size looks pretty high by January, by this time of the year, and yet, that wasn't our intention. And so, that's always a challenge for us. How much buffer do you put in there, but yet be as efficient as possible, knowing that we need to be conscious of finances and budget? And that's why the volatility at the elementary level. It's just hard to know where those students are going to come in, which buildings and which grade levels that are going to be impacted.
When we looked at the staffing projections last year, I was wondering how close we were from those projections to what the actual was.
On total, we were pretty accurate. I mean, we had very little change in, as far as the allocation of initial staffing that you approved last year, we varied very little from that, I believe. Chris and Brad, do you?
We were very, we were very accurate when it came to the certified staffing level at both special education and also at mainstream education. The place where we were a little off when it came to our initial numbers, we're looking at our educational assistance in the classified staff. That number was significantly higher than what we were projecting.
The aides and assistants?
Correct.
Can I just clarify that question? Are you asking about, I had the numbers from last year, this time last year versus, you guys are talking about the budget in August, because we had an estimate now, and then, when your tentative budget that you showed us in August was materially different than what we had talked about in January. And so, your projections came in, I'm assuming you're saying, very close to what the tentative budget thought that they were going to be when we put those numbers together? Because when we sat here last year, we were projecting a net add of somewhere in the, I think mainstream certified was 13 and 1/2, and we hired 22. And the special ed assistants were 6 to 7, and I think we hired 14. Yeah, I know there was a material change between this discussion last year and the tentative budget.
But did, were those, were the projections net in our hiring, was that gross? I mean, including the people that retired, replacements for retired teachers?
I just looked in the tentative budget. Chris had done a roll-forward that said, here's what was added during the course of the year, and here's what we ended up with for the tentative budget. The point isn't that it's wrong. The point is, is just that what you're looking at today, last year, changed significantly when we got more enrollment numbers, when we got more data, when we had more information, it went up. I mean, you can, you can check me on that, but I pulled an August 13 spreadsheet that had 22.4 certified and 14.3 special ed assistants on it. And then, I pulled a memo that we got last year at this time in January, and that was nine mainstream, 4 and 1/2 special ed certifies. I think there was an ELL number in there. I wasn't sure what bucket to put that one in. And I remember having the conversation about how, as you guys were tightening things up, but we ended up adding more. So, I just want to make sure that we're managing expectations around, this is, like Dave said, this is a first cut based on, we're asking them to do this very early, and so, they're giving us an idea. But, you know, that degree of certainty, I think when, I just want to make sure that, when you indicated what is actual versus projected, pretty close if you went off of the budget. I think it was different than the initial first blush, but it's not, not that it was wrong.
I don't think it's that far off. When you're saying 22, when I look back at January 8th of 2013, plus nine mainstream teachers, plus seven special education teachers, 16. So, I did 16 versus 22. I added up 16 from last January, and then, it ended up being 22 what you're, from August.
I had a different number.
Okay, so, we could check it. I'm just trying to get an idea of how close we are when we try to do this in January. That's it.
Well, and again, what we try to do, and again, I can't emphasize, this is based on the information we have right now at this point in time. So, it's projections, it's cohorts, it's looking at historical data. That can all change. But, what we try to do is build in our best scenario at this point in time that's going to cover us for all of our staffing needs for next year, knowing that something like elementary, that's pretty volatile, can swing either way, and that often does happen. But, you know, things like the high school, if we have all of a sudden a big growth in students coming in from private and parochial schools, and it's beyond the 100 that we historically have, that's hard to predict. But again, we think an FTE of 6 to 7 at York next year will cover that freshman class, given their typical pattern of taking classes in their freshman year. And it's, and again, it's mostly core classes, because they don't have a lot of room for electives. So, it's easier to project.
This is an annual exercise, I guess, and we appreciate everything you've done. This is great information to have. And it's, I'm just wondering if the long-term demographic information that, I thought we were in the process of trying to obtain would help this process? Would it add to this?
Yeah, no, this would, it would, I'm glad we're doing that, because again, the caserta data is dated, and it would really give us some hard information. For example, what's going to happen with the kindergarten classes' elementary enrollment in the future? Is that a trend that's going to continue? Is it just birth rates that were down a year or two, and they're going to be back up? So, that data will be very helpful for us in having a more accurate picture of what's going to happen in the future. And usually, it's projected by attendance boundaries, so that makes us even more accurate. And we don't have attendance boundary information now for the elementary schools. So, it's hard, again, to predict which buildings are continuing to grow, which buildings may see a decrease in enrollment over time. So, that kind of information will be key for us moving forward.
Do we approve some sort of search or process for obtaining those services, didn't we? Or, or at least you told us you were going out to get them.
We put it out to bid.
We put it out to bid.
We received proposals a week from today.
Oh, great. Great. That's good to hear. That's in the process.
And again, going back to the elementary again, what I would like to do is come back to the Board in February and give you a more accurate count of what the elementary enrollment is going to look like, because we think that's going to be a key barometer for us of what's happening to the new kindergarten class coming in and how many first graders are enrolling in Elmhurst for next year.
If I can just say that, the strategic reason for going through this exercise so early is that tonight, we can give the administration the go-ahead as they see fit to make offers to the best teachers that we can recruit. We have been in a, as a district, we've been in a disadvantage in the past, because the Board has not authorized this hiring until March. There are other districts that are giving offers in Januaries to the very best recruits. We want to be in that strategic class of school districts that can give an early offer to the very best new teachers coming out of college. And so, to the best that we can, being financially prudent, we want to give the administration the flexibility to do that.
And probably based on these numbers right now, we would probably stand pat and not do any kind of projected hiring for elementary, middle school. However, at York, at this point, we would like to get ahead of it, because we're pretty confident in the numbers we're seeing, that they're going to need those staff FTEs going into next year. I don't see any reason to hold up on those, especially as competitive as sometimes, you know, secondary teachers in some certification and qualification areas are. We would like to get ahead of that.
John.
You said the best college graduates. Do we get in the market for experienced teachers as well?
Well, as it's described to me, what the, the race seems to be on for the recent college graduate, who is very inclined to take the first offer they get, to secure themselves a job, since teaching jobs are difficult to get in our current environment. But yes, that would also apply to experienced teachers as well. It's just, it's just clearly a different market. But yes, it would give the administration flexibility to extend offers to whoever the administration wants to, wants to, wants to hire and recruit.
So, one of the issues, I think we can do this on the back of the envelope today, but this hasn't been flown, this hasn't been flown through the projections, the PMA, the budget, the preliminary that we saw before, because that budget had a net projected add of 57 students, and it had 12 certified. So, there's a bit more. But if you, if you looked at kind of what was there, and you kind of did a back-end envelope on a cost-per-head, we're still, I think, we're in that position. But from a matter of process, you know, we do need to run this through and make sure that we're not getting ourselves into a bind by doing it. That said, I think what Jim's talking about too is, I mean, there's the incremental add, but we know that there's a certain amount of turnover we're going to have anyway. So, we should be out looking to hire to replace that turnover, because I think that we can pretty firmly sit here and say that we're in a position of talking about what we're adding, not what we're cutting today, which is that first hurdle that we have to get over, and then we go through the rest of those. And so, that's a discussion. And we can have, we can have the discussion in committee about updating the model. I think that's on the agenda, and we'll bring that back to the Board as we update it. But I think right here, that shouldn't stand in the way of us, of us saying this makes sense. The second question is just, as we, as we go down the road with this, as we update these, from a Board level, I find it difficult to look at FTE adds. I just, I don't know what they mean. You guys can tell me what it is, but I don't know the impact. And impact is what we as a Board are supposed to be talking about. Class size, you know, is really the, I mean, if it's, it's, it's students divided by teachers when it comes to mainstream. And so, from a policy standpoint, we should be looking at what class-size targets we have. And if the staffing levels are changing, then it's based upon either us changing the class-size target or enrollment's moving. So, then this discussion becomes more about enrollment projections, which in this case is, okay, PMA had enrollment projections of X. We think that Y is probably where we kind of want to budget at in order to provide some cushion in there. And then, if you roll that enrollment through with the class sizes staying the same, i.e., and then what, what our targets are, because we get a lot, there's a lot out there around, you know, classes are 35, classes are 32, classes are 28. What are we, what are those variables that are going in as we do this? Because I think that's the discussion that the community is having. And so, you know, coming to us with these numbers is helpful, but I don't have context for what it means. If we hire six more at the high school, or two more at the middle school, I trust that what you're saying from a projection standpoint on enrollment matters. But the unknown is, we're saying, assuming that class-size targets stay the same, but we're not saying what they are. So, I think we should have those numbers as we talk through this. What are we using? What are we putting into the math problem when we spit out these FTE numbers? That's what we should be talking about, because when you look at this, I mean, they truly aren't non-discretionary. They're non-discretionary if you want to maintain class size and program service. But we've been through years of cuts, where if we were in a position where our budget was upside down, we'd be looking at cutting. And that's a decision the Board makes around, what are our staffing levels on programs? What are our staffing levels on class size, and what does that lead to? And I think that's the discussion we should be having at this table that gives a lot more context to, do we approve to add nine people or not? Well, no, we approved maintaining class size. I think that's kind of the discussion I'd like to have, because I just don't have context for where this all fits. So, as we go down the road here, I would love to at least add that piece of the discussion into it as we, as we do that.
You know, I know we've shared with the Board our targets for elementary. We've shared those before, again. And I think at the middle school, and Brad can correct me, I think our limits, when we start to get to 32, 33, we're starting to look at adding staff there. I think it's the same at the high school, with the caveats of things like gym classes, those kind of classes, we do get larger. I mean, gym classes at high school can run 40, 45. So, we can provide that data to you at the next. But you're absolutely right. And again, what we projected this on is no change in the class-size targets. So, that's another discussion for the Board to say, well, do we want at some level or in some classes to lower the class size because of some educational need that we see? And that would be a great, you know, opportunity for us to talk with the Board about how we see what that might look like and what the rationale is for lowering those. So, and again, at the elementary level, we've set targets. They're not hard and fast caps, but we have tried to target those with the caveat that in August, even though we target them, they sometimes go over, sometimes go under. And we're, you know, we have lower class sizes than we thought. So, we can provide that.
That'd be great. And this isn't meant to be a gotcha, but it's also, I think, having that conversation with all of us at the table and everything, so that the community's involved in that discussion is helpful, so that we take a little bit of the mystery around what we're, what we're doing here.
So, what I'm hearing is, we'll come back with that, those numbers and that discussion at the next Board meeting.
Really?
Yeah, and you'll have an update on it.
And we'll have updated PMA projections too, with, based on these?
Yes.
And then, we can see where we are after these recommendations and...
Okay, with, any other questions about the general ed? Then, I'll move on to special education and what we're seeing there. And that is in front of you. And I think it's, again, just to keep in mind that while our overall special education numbers are not increasing in the sense that we're getting more special education students into the district, the kind of special education students and the severity of the special education students continues to get more and more involved. The only caveat with that is probably Madison. Madison continues to grow, and you will see in our projections for special education that Madison has 1.5 total increase in FTE, and that's because of another special education teacher. And that's because of another special education teacher that we are probably going to be adding this February that is in the budget. And then a Madison, another speech teacher at Madison, a half-time. And again, simply because of the number of students that are coming into Madison. York, we're recommending an increase of one special education needed. There's a guided study program for reading strategies and guided study two. And both of those need added support for the number of students who are ending those guided study classes who have special education disabilities. And so it's a proactive model. It's a guided study to make sure kids are successful at, at York to give them that kind of support, but there's a special ed component to that. Elementary speech 2.0, and this is simply a calculation on the number of kids that we see that need speech therapy and the limit that is legally put upon us, which is 60 students per teacher, we're projecting a need for an added two. And then one, one and a half FTE and special education. And again, maybe needed yet this year based on the class load. So this is one where we may be adding staff as late as second semester because again, the severity and number of students walking in causes the increase. And there are limits on how many students each special education can have on their caseload. So it's a function of looking at those numbers.
Go ahead.
Is it true, I just assume it would be this way, that Madison would be more of a challenge too because it's not like kindergarten where the people that are going to go to Madison next year enroll in February? I mean, don't you have kids showing up, their needs are assessed throughout the year and then they're showing up throughout the year?
Kids assessed through the preschool screening process.
Right.
And we're required through Childfind to basically go out and search all over Elmhurst for students who might be eligible. And that includes, you know, advertising in doctor's offices as well as all of the preschools. So we really don't have necessarily a good handle on the kids who are not currently in Illinois Early Intervention.
Right.
We do have a really good relationship with Illinois Early Intervention and they give us the heads up about kids who they're already servicing.
Who are younger than three, right?
Yeah, who we take over on their third birthday.
Right.
And, and that's part of why there's going to be an increase. We didn't want to increase at the start of the school year with the 1.0 that we're asking for at Madison potentially. I talked to Susan Condrat today and it sounds like it's going to be more like the middle of March instead of February that we're going to need it because it's based on when the kids turn three.
Okay. If a four-year-old, if their needs are identified in, say, September, do they start school at Madison right away? I mean, assuming they would need.
They start as soon as their case study evaluation is completed.
Okay. So it's not like they would wait till January?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else? Chris?
Meg, I think last year you gave us an update kind of by program, the kids that were enrolled. And so we could get a sense of, of the resource allocation piece. You know, we had, we had this kind, these self-contained programs and these, you know, and we have this many staff kind of, I think you had given us a memo when we had kind of asked to peel down. Do I, am I got, do I have that right?
I'm not sure that you have that exactly right about a breakdown about like a ratio of number of kids to staff because it's all based on the caseload workload as well as the class size limits and ratios that are put forth from ISBE. And those are all part of the workload caseload plan that I could forward to you. That might make a little bit more sense when you're talking about numbers.
That would help. Again, back to the earlier comment about just kind of caseloads and limits and, I mean, a significant amount of resources are investing in a program that we do pretty well. Thank you. Because you, you have a lot to do with the fact that we do that well. But just knowing how that, how that investment is arrayed out. Because I think what you, maybe what, where I'm getting this wrong is, is I think you probably gave us the number of kids per kind of program and we didn't kind of tie that to this.
I think what you're talking about is the number of kids with certain disabling conditions. And we could break that out for you again if that worked out.
I'm just trying to get some kind of a context for this without creating a bunch of work. But I mean, ideally, I would love to understand your, if you've got a caseload model, that maybe that, that'll get us there.
I could send you the workload plan, sure.
Yeah, why don't we start, why don't we start there? Just.
Because Meg has to, you have to file that, Meg, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That has to be filed and approved by the state.
It's filed with the state, yeah.
So that would be something we should look at so you get an idea of what we have to file every year and what those ratios are.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
We can do that.
Shannon?
Yeah, I remember the presentation, I went back, it was in September, we reviewed the different disabilities and Meg did a nice special ed, special education presentation. And I went back to that and I remember we talked about, you had asked us, you know, what is the board looking for? And we talked about the, the public law 94142 to assess and assure the effectiveness of efforts to educate all children with disabilities. And as I was going through this document, it came, came back to me, how are we going, how do we assess and assure the effectiveness of, of the efforts?
We have a report every year that we have the case managers complete and that's the number of students who were effective in completing or achieving their goals and objectives as listed in their IEP. It's a little bit difficult to be quantitative about a group of students whose education is so completely individualized. So that's how we, that's the barometer that we use.
Question I had was, how, how do our numbers compare with other districts for special education assistance and aides? With our, do we do a comparable, a study or look at that with our comparable districts?
With the comparable districts, I would say that we're about on a par. We have about 13% of our students who are eligible for special in this district. That's slightly lower than the district average. The different thing that I noticed with regard to the, the districts that we compare ourselves to is that our community is very strongly vested, our parents of our special needs students are very strongly vested in their students being in the regular education classroom. You can take a look at other districts who may use fewer aides, but those students are not mainstream to the level that we mainstream our kids, which we've talked about with Charles about them getting the exposure to the richness of our curriculum. And that is what drives those test scores of the students with disabilities up is having that exposure, not having the watered-down curriculum that you might experience in a classroom that is secluded from, you know, not only the teachers in the regular classroom, but also their peers. So we might be a little bit top-heavy when it comes to aides, but it's partially because our community demands it. Our parents know their rights. They know that those kids are, have a right to be in the mainstream class if at all possible. That's part of the law. As well as the fact that we, as an administration and as a school district, really value what's going on in those gen ed classes and we want those students to be able to benefit from that.
All set?
Then I'll move on to English, that ELL program. And this is another area where we have looked at, and I know we dealt with this last year, but there is an increase in expansion in our ELL population. And as a result, we are going to be looking at increasing our certified ELL staff next year across all grade levels. And obviously, elementary school teachers, English language learners, we're recommending a 1.5 increase in, in FTEs, 1.5 at the middle school, and then at the high school, a two FTE. There's a couple of factors that go into this real briefly, just overall for, for the board's understanding. One is the number of students that we're receiving from, who are English language learners. We have added an influx of students who not only have that challenge, but they also have educational challenges coming into the district. We are seeing a significant number of students who have no or very little previous formal education. They are coming from countries all over the world, especially South America. They are moving into Elmhurst, but what we're finding is very little education. And sometimes these are students, for example, who are walking in the middle school, who have only been in school the equivalent of one or two years. So that really impacts that kind of support you are giving these students because now you have the language issue and you also have the formal education piece that is just not there. The other thing, and Charles can go into greater detail about this, as you know, we had the audit from the, the state ISBE who came in and audited us in the fall. We do not have the formal report yet. We are still waiting to hear the formal report. But there were some recommendations that we know in their exit interview, they are already suggesting that we do. That's reflected in the FTE. One of the important things is the, a big change that's coming up is in the access testing, that the level of access testing to exit a student out of the program is becoming much more rigorous. And that's going to be instituted, it's being instituted right now. Students are taking the access test, but the previous exit score is now higher than it has been in the past. That's response to the coming common core that is coming up. There's a feeling in the state that students need a better grasp of English than they ever have before. And so that access to be totally released from ELL programming is going to be higher than it has been in the past. And, and Charles can go through and give you the other highlights. At least as we know right now, again, we haven't seen the final report, but this is kind of what we heard at the exit interview.
Yeah, we had informal comments at the exit interview and like, we expected to have the report by now. But in certain areas where we have staffing, particularly at the high school and at the middle school, we have pieces added in those numbers to fully build out a complementary program so that those students, so we can essentially narrow the gap for those students and have an equitable and comparable offering to the same as all students. Other things that need to be factored in is, is up until recently, our program was relatively contained to, to the north end of town and we had very scant programs at some of the other schools. And as geographically, our ELL population spreads throughout the school district, it now triggers program demands at other buildings that formerly either had small programs or no programs. And so it's not quite a linear progression. So X number of students equals X number of teachers. There's certain points where you'll have a, a spurt of increase in staffing needs based on the students as they show up and where they show up. Add to that is, is some recognition of the particular needs of the students that Dave spoke of, is that, that we are seeing even this week, students of considerable need showing up at our doors, which I think is, is another trigger for some of our staffing needs for ELL, is it is, it is a population that we find arise unpredictably and with timing that doesn't necessarily match up with our budgetary processes. So we often see increases in our population after the start of the school year, after teachers are hired and in their place, and then after the winter break. And as, that's what we're experiencing today. Just to elaborate on what Dave said regarding the exit criteria change with the state, our students are now taking the access test starting this week. We won't get that data back until May. So there is 1.3 of staffing in the, what you see on the, on the board that is, is essentially recognizing that our numbers could change a bit, and I'm being vague on purpose, in May, by May. And so we have some immediate needs, but we are un, we are, we're giving it the best shot that we've got with the information that we have. There's some variability with this population and with the change in testing where we can't predict the outcome.
Questions? Karen?
So to the, so to the point of the access testing, I know that this past year, we had some concerns of, or misunderstandings, various different reasons, right? Of students maybe getting into the program because of the access, you know, different issues, right? And if the state is saying that's more difficult to get out of the program based on the access, are we really looking at that entrance criteria and making sure that we get all the kinks out?
I think the concerns that we had in the past and, and the breadth and scope of that probably is a worthy debate, is, is really not an issue in regards to the exit score for access. If parents don't want their children to participate in the English language learner program, they have the right to ask their child to be removed from the program regardless of the scores. We might make strong recommendations as to the suitability of that, of that decision. But if a parent feels that their, that their child is in that program erroneously, they have the right to take their child out. And the communication has been addressed in that particular area I think you're referring to.
And when you say communications, it's making sure that all of the parents understand what information they have to provide and all of those details. Okay.
Yes, those details were reviewed with relevant staff and addressed.
And then the second question was around, Dave, when you talked about, we now are seeing that students are coming in to the program, let's say, middle school that didn't have the, you know, six years of education. And if we now have additional headcount that's needed or FTE that's needed because the need is across the district instead of that one facility or, you know, several facilities, is there another option for us to figure out a solution where we could bring more students together or am I not, am I missing a, a piece of this? You know what I mean? Instead, I know that we're familiar with neighborhood schools, but can we in this particular instance with, you know, this program, bring all the students together? I'm just wonder, I mean, is that an option? Is that, are there other alternatives besides just increasing headcount and looking at it as, as the same old model that we've always used? That's all I'm asking.
We can review that, but I think you have to be sensitive to issues of segregation and how that would be viewed. And so I think you'd have to tread very carefully if there was an attempt to centralize programs for that reason. I would want.
I'm just trying to be open-minded about the efficiencies, the effectiveness, the economics, I mean, just everything that we have to manage and balance sitting at this table. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah. And I'm wondering, I'm looking at the middle school English language learners and I'm wondering if someone would help me unpack this sentence here that talks about the recent discussions between the middle and high school levels have led to ideals of implementing rigorous foreign language offerings for native speakers which would serve as ELL and place students on a track toward AP courses at the high school. And I'm trying to unpack that sentence with the idea of the subject that came up where students are arriving and they have had very little formal education and are significantly behind where it would be expected the average level would be.
That's a sentence that only that I can love. So it, it's referring to the development of heritage language programs that are an AP class at the high, that are an AP opportunity at, at the high school. And allowing students to take language classes in the language that they already possess, but to take it to a higher level, we would call that a heritage Spanish, Spanish class. So we're, we're proposing the offering, we have 33 students for whom they have enough Spanish skill that they wouldn't be appropriate for a traditional Spanish class at Churchville, but we would offer them a heritage Spanish class at Churchville. And we currently have Heritage One and Heritage Two Spanish at the high school. One, the Heritage Two is an honors credit class currently. Those are both recommendations that we got for, from, in the informal conversation with the ISBE, is make sure that we're, we have some rich opportunities and, and tracks for these, I shouldn't say tracks, avenues for these students so that they can take some more higher rigor courses. What we have found, what districts that have done this have found, there is great appreciation for the fact that there is a cultural language element that connects school to home for these particular students. In, in many cases, they're a different group of students than those who are coming with very weak academic backgrounds. These are fairly strong students coming in who have a language is their, language is their strength and we want to take advantage of, of their strength.
Thank you for that. And so, so then my interpretation here is that we are actually talking about two different groups of people, of two groups of students. We've got the students who are progressing in the heritage language classes and we've got students that may need additional services.
That's absolutely correct. And you gave me a segue to make a point. It's important to understand within ELL population that even though for our district, it's a small population, there's a great deal of diversity within that population. So, and that makes it more important for us to have a breadth of offerings for them. So, and that makes it more important for us to have a breadth of offerings for them.
Chris?
How do you find the talent? Um, you know, I'm building a little bit on Karen's point, and just, if you had Russian speakers in three different schools, how do you find three different ELL teachers that teach Russian in three different schools? How do, I mean, beyond just the economics, how do we find the people to deliver that kind of service?
Part of that's the advantage of living in the metropolitan area that we live in, that there is, there is a decent labor market. But the key is, there's a couple of things that are important. First is to start early, so Karen Muleteri and Angelica Romano went and started doing recruiting very early last year, and there is an English Language Learner, a Teacher of English Language Learners Recruitment Fair that takes place relatively early. And so, being ready, making these decisions early is, is probably, I don't want to step over special ed, but is probably most essential for this particular population. These are the most sought-after recruits that exist. I mean, people who are math experts and are bilingual are heavily recruited. And, and another part of it is, it is important that we establish for these recruits, since they have, they have the ability to select where they want to work, is that we have a program committed to the students that they really have a heart and soul for. And that's the program that Karen's really worked hard to establish in the past couple of years. In a case where you have small frequency languages, let's use Russian, is that we would probably use that teacher for the low incidents that we have to provide support, and that, that teacher would have to travel, which is really based on the nature of the, the district that we have. We've had teacher, we have one teacher who's at Field and at Addison as both an ELL teacher and as a Spanish teacher, so we split them up, their, their assignments up, and they all have to travel across the district. So, and that's really where we get to that stair-step case. If we were to get 20 Russian speakers, that changes everything for us, and we would, we would have to do extensive recruiting.
Margaret?
I have one last question, and I'm wondering, I know we, we grouped these buckets separately, but my thought, my question is, is there any natural overlap in these? Or, I mean, it just, this seems quite too clean-cut for real life. It just feels like that to me. So are, is there, is there potential overcounting, undercounting? It's just?
In all honesty, yes, because the, the state uses a different counting, accounting methodology than, than we do. So, the state has a state SIS system, the state tracks the kids who are in the English Language Learner Program. When students move from one district to the other, that, those host, those originating districts have to release, release those students in the state student information system, the student, the state SIS, and, and then those numbers would change. We've used very conservative and probably in the low side numbers, but our numbers are different than the state's. And also, you're, you know, when we have, we could have one critical move in, so you're right, it's not this cut and dry. And that's why there's a little bit of, of space built into the 5.0 that we've put into ELL.
Anything else? Okay. Again, we will bring back our staffing as far as class size and those issues. We'll bring that back at the next meeting. If there are any other questions that board members have in the meantime, please feel free to email us. I think, I think the benefit of this exercise is just what we saw tonight. We originally came in here projecting a PMA increase of 12. As we actually went through this, we see a, you know, unfortunately, an increase of, dramatically above the 12. But I think it's things like ELL, like the impact on York and the potential that we, you just don't see if you just simply do roll-ups. So this allows us to get in deeper. And again, going into the future, we'll keep updating the board, and we can get better and better recommendations on where we're going with staffing even by February. I, I think the registration enrollment will be a good barometer for us. So, thank you. Should we move on to the consent agenda? There is only one item on tonight's consent agenda, and that is the approval of a donation to Lincoln School from the Lincoln PTA. And worth about $11,000, the PTA has graciously offered to donate eight Wi-Fi access points, five iPads, five OtterBox iPad cases, and five iPad adapters, and training professional development for any district 205 elementary teacher that is interested in iPad training. As a little background, Lincoln already has a trial of iPads going on with some teachers that come to us from other districts where they used iPads extensively in their classroom. And those teachers are acting as kind of the iPad angels within Lincoln to, to show other teachers what can be done with iPads in the classroom to enhance education. And Lincoln's already held a professional development session, which we've had teachers from, I believe, three different elementary schools attend at the expense of the Lincoln PTA. So, I need a motion, and then we can have a discussion. Emily?
I'd like to remove from the consent agenda. Is that what you're asking the motion for?
You can just, you can just move for the entire consent agenda. There's only one item on it, we can discuss that one item. All right, then, remove item A.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, and so now, now we need a motion to approve item A, now that we've, John?
I move that the Board of Education approved the donation from Lincoln School PTA in an amount of $11,000 for iPad technology and training. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy number eight, colon, eight oh, gifts to the district.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
I second that motion.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Karen. Margaret had her red light on first.
And obviously, I think, first, you start off, and we appreciate all donations being given. And I think it is helpful particularly for this, that we kind of talk, walk through what the process is for accepting, for the review of technology donations. And I state that specifically because I know there is a list that was put together about what was being requested. So could you just talk through the process on how items are, are reviewed?
My caveat is, we, we're not reviewing per se PTA donations, so I don't want the impression that we preview that. What we've asked the principals to do, and this is fairly recent, but this year, what we ask our principals to do is if they were contemplating a technology donation that they were going to be at, talking with their PTAs about, we would like to review that with technology and curriculum to make sure that it was something that technology could support, that there was a plan on how that technology was going to be utilized, that it matched our curriculum and some of our even long-term curriculum goals, whether it was a pilot program, whether it was directly related to curriculum that's ongoing, that there was some kind of review on what that plan was going to look like, how it was going to be implemented, all of those issues, and clear those up before it got to the point where there was a conversation with the principal and the PTA about that kind of fundraising. So in this case, and particularly Kathleen had gone to David and Charles, had had that conversation, reviewed the plan, what the intention was, that what they were going to do, and curriculum and technology signed off and said, yes, we can support that kind of plan. At the same time, we also put out the list of our technology needs across the district. And we've asked PTAs to also consider that when they are planning for purchasing or donating funds for technology. Here's the list of items that you could consider. Now, it's a list for them to consider. It's not a list that we say we're only going to approve donations for these. We're not going to prevent donations from coming to the board if they want to go in a different direction, or they want to purchase other items. Again, we hope that it's been reviewed with the principal, there's dialogue with the PTA, we've pre-approved those, and now they're coming to the board for approval. But, you know, again, PTA is an independent entity, they have their own decision-making process, and the fact of the matter is they come to the board with donations on a regular basis. So, that's kind of the process we've put in place this year for that process. Emily? I was just looking, it looked like Margaret had a follow-on question in her eyes, but we'll let her think about it.
Okay, along the same lines. I just can't help but just feel a little frustration because I feel like we keep coming back to this. I feel a little bit like it's the tail wagging the dog, because the last meeting, we got a great presentation from Dave Smith of where we're kind of heading, and then I see this donation, which I cannot say enough how thankful I am for these parents who show up at the fundraisers that these schools have. They care deeply about their children's education, and so they give money to improve that education. And I'm so thankful for any donation. It's just that I look at the list of things that have supposedly been provided to the principals and to the PTAs. It's my understanding, they have all seen this and they understand it. It's Wi-Fi access points, video surveillance cameras, lab and library printers, and carts of 30 Google Chromebooks for the middle schools. I just want you to tell me, they are looking at this list and saying, no, we're going to buy iPads. And instead of kind of following the plan that I feel like Dave Smith just began to introduce last time, it's we are going to do our own professional development. We have teachers from other districts who have these great ideas, and they're going to teach our teachers how to do this. It just feels like the tail wagging the dog to me. And I just, I really thought, and I said this last time, when we presented our sort of wish list or our needs, it's not even a wish list, it's needs, security cameras, that the PTAs would hear the message, because I feel like we're on the same page here. I just, there's a disconnect. I don't feel like the principals or the PTAs are hearing that. And I just wanted to see if you disagreed with me, if I'm wrong, or if it just takes time that you think, or if, if it's just, we're going to continue to see things that are not on the list of our technology needs. And I'm okay, I mean, I can handle it if it is, but I just, where's the disconnect?
Again, I guess I'll emphasize that we can certainly put out lists, we can make recommendations, we can talk to the PTAs about, you know, what our needs are. But in the end, they are independent support PTAs, but they are independent, and they can make decisions based on a different direction that they, they want to go in. I can't, short of authorization by the board saying, we're not going to accept these donations, I don't have a lot of options, nor do those, the administration, about exactly controlling where the donations go. And, and so, you know, we can encourage, we can, you know, say, these are our needs, this is what we're looking for. But again, in that dynamic between what the PTAs are fundraising and what the PTA parents want to fund, there's a decision that they make that may not do that. And I, you know, David has, you know, we've talked about this, we've talked to the principals. And I'm not sure the principals, in this case, the principals are sometimes in a tough spot too, because they're saying, look, this is, this is where we want to go. But the PTAs say, well, we really want, we'd love iPads, we'd love this, some of these ideas, and we want to at least fund some of the iPads. Now, in this case, Lincoln did fund access points also, but they also felt that they wanted again into and look at iPads on the staff level, and that's what was presented to David. I don't know if you have a comment, Dave?
Well, at least, I didn't speak directly with Charles about this particular donation, but the way I looked at it was, I did take a look at Lincoln's equitability measure, because that's one thing I look at every time there's a, a request even to, with the idea of donating technologies, I look at the, either the, the computer or the interactive technology equitability. In this case, Lincoln was below the, the K5 average for that, that measure, so I felt like that would actually help. It would be something that would go towards making the per-student investment more equitable. The other piece was the access points, which really was complementary, because the more devices you add, the more access points you need at this stage, so I felt that that was a nice package. And the third part was the professional development, the fact that there was professional development that would go along with the technology. So, I guess another consideration too is that, I know that the curriculum department is having conversations with K5 stakeholders about, as, as Charles pointed out in his presentation last time, was the, the K5 roadmap is not as clear maybe as some of the other levels, but there's conversations going on, and I know that touch tablets are part of what's being discussed. So you wrap all that together, and I felt like this, in this particular case, it made sense to accept this donation. But in terms of the list, the list is really, it's really a list of ideas that are available for consideration, but it's not necessarily, as Dave said, not necessarily what we're trying to converge everybody to, to stick to just that list. Yeah.
Go ahead, Emily.
Well, I mean, maybe the other board members can weigh in. Do we care about that list? I mean, are those things that we want? Do you feel like it would be beneficial if we talked to our liaison schools about it, or no? Are you guys comfortable with seeing more iPad donations?
John?
You know, I look at this, and I think, what I said at the last discussion when we talked about this, was to put a target out there that our, our partners can help us with. And I think this one hits a lot of parts of that target in a lot of ways, the access points. If you look at the piece Dave put together, he said eight access points were needed for Lincoln, this covers it. It's more than half the donation. The, the support, and it seems like it hits it. What are the other elements? We, we're looking for something that would include, it would be nice if the entire gift was within the target, but this hits a lot of the, the target that's out there. And, you know, I'm grateful. And I think, as I said, it's less aligned, you know, Chromebooks at the elementary level, and if they're experimenting, and they're looking at things, and they're determining whether something's effective, I think that's exactly what we want to encourage at the local schools. But I think a lot of this hits the target, at least more than half of it hits the target that's put out there.
Margaret?
So I, and I appreciate, I appreciate this discussion, and I think it's important. I think it's important because I think there is, there are differing opinions. There are opinions that say that we need to be very focused, we need to state what exactly our needs are versus having a target list out there. So if this discussion, and if we're all in agreement that this is an ideal, and they can choose from this list, the PTAs or whoever does donations, they can choose from this list, or they can totally pick something totally different. If that's what the board is all in alignment with, then I think that is a very different, then that is different than my understanding of what this list was. My understanding of what this list was, was that this was what the school, what we as a district needed, and we needed it for the, for all the schools, and that this would be the priority of donations. Now I'm understanding that's not necessarily what we're saying, which is fine, so it's my clarification. And then I will probably play, pay less attention then to that list, to this, this technology list that is out there. Is that a fair, I mean, is that a fair statement? I mean, am I, am I off-target on something here? This is, this is not a, this is a, a nice-to-have but not needed.
I, I think, and we're interested in other opinion, opinions as well, to, to address directly what, what you're saying, Margaret, is.
I think, and interested in other opinion as well, to address directly what you're saying, Margaret, is, I believe that the administration put that list together as trying to provide some leadership for PTAs who, we have a lot of PTAs who are gifted at raising money, and want to use that money for the further education and to enhance the education of their children in that particular elementary school. I totally get that. So the administration put out that list to provide some leadership of what the, in their opinion, what the highest and best use for that money would be, but yet also realizing that it is private money coming into the public schools. And if people want to vary from that list, you know, that's their right to do so. And if I can give you, if I can throw in my two cents on the idea of iPad use in our elementary schools. As Dave pointed out, we have a less developed plan than the middle school and the high school for the, for the use of touchpad computing, or one-on-one devices, whatever you want to call them. And, you know, when you look at the number of iPads out there in our district today versus the number of elementary students we have, I think you could easily call it experimental, you know, lab-type. And if that helps us make a better decision in terms of what, when we go wide-scale, what we want to use in the elementary schools, maybe there's just, we find there's just so many better apps for iPads that are adapted to elementary kids, that it's a no-brainer to go with iPads. And then therefore, these PTAs have helped us make that decision easier. There's not, I mean, the PTAs realize that these devices, there's no commitment for Dave Smith's tech department to support. So they understand that going in. So I think there are laboratories that help us make a better decision by having some hands-on. And for the, and because of that, I don't, I don't really personally have any problem with these small implementations of iPads within our schools. If they fit into the curriculum, if the teachers can work them into the curriculum and teach our curriculum more effectively by the use of this technology, I want to encourage that, and I want to try it out. I want to see what works. And when we find something that works really well, then I think it's incumbent for this board to have the discussion about how we implement that throughout all the schools.
And again, I appreciate this, and this is absolutely laboratory. My disconnect is more on what is the purpose of the, or what is the function of the technology list that was out there. And if I am understanding that, and perhaps this was my error, that I was taking it too literal, and if it is a wish list, not a need-to-have list, then it's a totally different discussion. And I guess that's what I'm trying to get a clarification on, is that this technology list is a wish list.
It's a need list, too. We just didn't come up with this and say, "Gee, here's some nice things to have." We are saying both, that it's a need list, we would like to move in this direction. And again, it was based on our priority of what we, Dave, and discussions with staff about what we thought those were. Again, we were trying to provide leadership and give direction to PTAs. If they were going to donate, here's some things you should consider. I think you're going to be challenged to say, "And the only ones we're going to look at are these on this list, and everything else we're going to say, 'Thank you,' but no, thank you." I just don't think that's realistic. You could have a big donor come up to the board next week and say, "I want to donate a whole new wing to one of the schools for some kind of project." Are you going to say, "No, that's not in our list, we're not ready for that?" I mean, that would be an interesting discussion to say, "Where are we?" And it's no different than colleges and universities. Colleges and universities have donations come right out of the woodwork on some pet project that some entrepreneur has that they want the university to start. And, you know, I think in 99% of the cases, the university said, "Yeah, we think that's a great idea, we will accept that donation and put it there." I, you know, so I don't think we're any different from any other, when it comes to philanthropy and donations that, you know, we struggle with. And it does, in a sense, change your direction, even at the university level. Because now, at some point, you're diverting staff to look at that and see what it is. But that's the nature of donations.
And again, the reason I want to have this discussion public is that I think there are some community members who believe that this is a only list. So I think it's important that we clarify what this list and what the function of this list is. And then I think everyone will be clear on when, you know, donations come in, why we make the choices that we do. So that is part of the reason why I'm having this discussion, and wanted to make sure this is a public discussion, so people who are interested will know what and why we do the things we do. So, thank you.
That's fair. Chris, you had your hand up, and then Shannon.
I think the reconciliation, in my mind, that's not, in my mind, that's not a collectively exhaustive list. It is a list, standing here looking across the district, that says that these are the things. So on the rapid, Lincoln. So I've had this conversation with the PTAs about kind of the pros and cons of what they're trying to accomplish. And one point, if you don't have the access points, the iPads are worthless because you can't connect them. So I need to understand that part of it. But it doesn't mean, so this is, as we sit, as Dave sits, and you guys talk to staff and think about what does the district need as a whole. Innovation happens both ways, also from the bottom up. And so I don't think we can be arrogant enough to think that we know exactly what the teachers want. And arrogant's the wrong word, but prescient or insightful enough to know that. And so, in this case, the teachers, there were teachers that had an interest in doing this, had identified the person that was going to provide the professional development, had asked to do it. And my understanding in the expansion of this program is, is after the initial training, there were more teachers that, started out, actually, there was a story about one of the teachers went into the room saying, "Hey, do you want us to get you one of these," I don't know, it was a connector or something. "No, no, I'm okay." And goes through it, and afterwards goes, "Wow, yeah, I'd really like that now." And it's created some evangelists that have created some demand, which, to Jim's point, starts to create, you know, from the bottom up kind of thoughts. So the device is somewhat irrelevant. It's the professional development, and that's the conversation that I've had with the PTA there, which is, if you're going to throw devices at a classroom, you're just wasting your parents' money. It's having that teacher and that group of folks that are actually using it come and say, "Hey, I would really like to experiment, I want to try, I want to do." And that's what's going to drive the effectiveness of whether it's this, or a Surface tablet, or a Chromebook, or anything else. And so, in my mind, it was kind of, we have some guiding pieces at the top that the district really does need. I mean, we need bandwidth to make all of this stuff work. But that said, it's not meant to be exclusive to the point where, if we have some great ideas from the teachers in the classroom, and the staff that come back and say, "Hey, you know, I want to pilot, or I want to try," that's where some of this stuff ends up on the agenda, I think. So I guess that's, I don't know if that helps, but that's just the way, I guess, I'm thinking about it.
And again, absolutely. So my question is, and I think I want to restate, my question was not about the importance of innovation, understanding it happens a variety of different ways, certainly not to say that this list would never ever change or wouldn't have fluctuation. It was more about getting to the assumptions behind this list. And my main point here was that there were different assumptions on what the focus or what the point of this list was. And what I wanted to do was have a public conversation about what we thought the function of this list was. So it's clear, our assumptions, and I think that, I think that is for everyone who is close to a scenario, there are all of these built-in assumptions that people on the outside never understand. And it appears that we are making, we're talking out both sides of our mouths. So that's why I wanted to dig down a little deeper, so they understood what the assumptions were and why we're making the choices that we are. So, understand innovation, appreciate it, greatly appreciate the gift from Lincoln or whoever else provides us these opportunities. Again, just kind of talking through what our assumptions are, and trying to make those as clear as possible, as often as we can. And I'll stop talking on this. Thank you.
Shannon, do you?
Dave, I have a question. At the elementary level, it's obvious at that level, they want devices, okay, and it's not on the list. So I was wondering, why not open up the carts of Google Chromebooks? And, you know, it just says, "Middle schools." Why does it have to say, "Middle schools," and let experiment happen at the elementary level with the Chromebooks, too? Because you know that they're interested in devices.
Yes, that's a good question. And actually, I know there's one teacher in the district that was contemplating a foundation grant for Chromebooks. The issue, quite frankly, kind of comes down to resources, in that with the Google environment, we spent a lot of effort preparing the middle school level for Google Apps for Education, which is the underpinning of all, you know, the Chromebooks and Google Docs, has got the whole Google environment and platform behind it. And we started with the high school a couple of years ago, or a few years ago. We've spent the time in planning to develop the middle school level and roll out the IDs to the students and help the teachers understand what's going on and communicate with the parents. And to do that at the elementary level would be quite a bit of preparatory work and planning. And there's technical work behind it to set up the environment, set up the accounts, get the information to the students. So really, in terms of, it's all doable. I mean, we could, and probably, or may even roll it out to the elementary level, the Google environment, I mean. But it takes more planning than meets the eye, because you have to decide about the domains, the email addresses, the student accounts, the passwords, how you want to configure it, communicating it with the parents, teaching the students about it. There's a little bit more to it than meets the eye. So I think it takes more planning and thought, and working with the curriculum department, working with the curriculum teams, and developing a plan to do that. So it's not something you just pull the trigger and say, "We're just going to do that." I think we'd have to get ready for that. Yeah.
I just want to say that the discussion was helpful, because, I mean, I think I was wrong. I really thought that they didn't see the list, didn't get it, didn't cover it. And it sounds like they did. They got it, and they just kind of chose.
I have had, just so we're clear, I've had conversation with PTA council, I have presented this list, I explained what the list was. So at least from the PTA officers, I would be surprised if there's any confusion about what that list is. And maybe there is, but we went to great lengths. As a matter of fact, then, you know, it's not solidified yet. But then, I think from that conversation, PTA is going to be requesting, I understand, that David come to the next PTA council meeting, to go through that list again and talk about the future of technology, so they have a better understanding of where the district is and where we're going, and what some of the challenges are with technology right now. So that should help the understanding, too.
And I can tell you, I was at the PTA meeting at Lincoln, and we actually went through that list at Lincoln, and they drained it. And they bought all the access points. They kind of said, "I still have money, what can I spend it on?"
They didn't drain it. I mean, there's...
They bought, they bought all their access points.
Right, okay, they drained that one.
And they were asking about video cameras, and they were asking about, but video cameras were mostly high school at this point in time. And we went through each of the items on the list.
The security cameras are for the high school only?
It's going to be rolled out, my understanding is, but right now, it's...
We wanted an equitable, but when it came to security cameras, what I was trying to avoid is having a lot of security cameras at one building, and then we do not have security cameras. There's an equity/safety issue that I'm a little worried about when it comes to the video cameras. So what I've said is, we would like the PTAs to donate video cameras, and we will try to distribute them on an equitable basis for safety of all students. I think it's a different category, so that's my position on that one.
Any other thing just to add to that is, there's been, we started to review the buildings themselves and had internal discussions about where the priority spots are within the district. So really, the security camera discussion is really ongoing right now internally to understand what our next steps would be.
John?
I hear, or I see this list, and I'm going back because we've been talking about some of these technological upgrades that have occurred over the last couple of years. And the way you described it is, first you bring the trunk in and you bring access. But it seems like the thing we do know, or you do know, you know, as you move forward, is that we need more access. And when I look at this donation, I say, "Boy, they really hit it." You said, "We need eight access points," and they provided eight access points, which, I guess there's an issue of equity now, that, do you have one per room, which was your target for Lincoln now?
Yes, this would actually, actually, there was a previous donation at Lincoln, I would think, where five access points were donated. So between those two donations, these two donations, the previous one and this one, that finishes, that will finish the deployment of access points at Lincoln. But I will point out that the Churchville PTA stepped up and finished off Churchville. The, I think Edison is finished, and...
Wow.
Emerson, I believe, might be the other building. There's three or four buildings in Elmhurst now with this, these eight access points here, that will have their full one access point per classroom target completed. We still have work to do in the closets, the network closets, so that's part of the roadmap. But the wireless access point deployment is actually farther ahead than originally planned due to the donations that we've received so far.
I mean, from my perspective, that's great. And I think this is, you know, I want to focus on that positive side of what this is doing. You know, there's maybe different understandings about where we're going and everything, and that's fine, and that's part of a good debate. But the part that we do know, the part that you laid out, that access was a primary goal, this promotes that. And so, I favor this thing, and want to say, very appreciative for all the PTAs stepping up in their own buildings and meeting needs.
Yeah, I think this was a far more broad, and frankly, a very helpful discussion, far more broad than one donation to one elementary school, but I think we covered a lot of ground. Should we vote on the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh, do I need a roll call vote here?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays, that donation and the superintendent's consent agenda passes. Next on our, on our agenda is upcoming meetings. Tomorrow night, in these very... Oh, wait a minute, I skipped one, didn't I? Okay. Mr. Purno, the superintendent's action item, sorry.
Yes, we are asking for approval of the resolution authorizing the intervention and proceeds before the DuPage County Board of Review and the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board. Just for clarification, the board has had approved this resolution previously. However, there was a date on it, it only ran for one year. We're asking permission now that anytime we hit the criteria that's in the resolution, we would entertain the possibility of challenge to the DuPage County Board of Review for the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board. Chris, anything that I missed?
Any discussion? I mean, a little background, about a year ago, was that, is that right, Mr. Walsh? Two years ago? We implemented this policy to allow our law firm to oppose, or at least investigate any property tax appeal above a certain dollar amount. And that certain dollar amount was large enough that if it was a homeowner, we wouldn't get involved, but it was a large commercial property, we would authorize our law firm to take a look at it and see if the property owner was asking for too much relief, and if that was the case, to intervene on the school district's behalf. We've had one case in that period of time where a law firm has intervened and reached an agreement somewhere between what the commercial property owner asked for and what the original assessment was. So this resolution would just allow our law firm to do that, you know, continuing on without a, without an end date on it. And if we feel that that's not the right policy for us at some point in the future, we can always pass a resolution that preempts this resolution. So. Think I need just a voice vote on this? I need a motion, I'm sorry, you're right. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing intervention and proceedings before the DuPage County Board of Review and the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Karen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Now we get to the upcoming meetings. Tomorrow night, and this, in fact, all of these meetings occur in the same rooms that we're in tonight. Tomorrow night is the special Board of Education meeting. I'll call this our mid-year retreat, just to make that sure that we are on task with what we, the goals we set for ourselves at the beginning of the fiscal year. Tuesday, January 21st...
Tuesday, January 21st, the regularly scheduled Finance and Operations Committee at 6:30 PM. Wednesday, January 22nd, the Policy Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. And Tuesday, January 28th, our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Next is Board Communications. If I can interject something about what we spent some time on in closed session, which was discussing property acquisition, lease purchase, article in the paper very recently about the Park District's discussion of the Berto campus. We've been working with the Park District and the city. In fact, let me, let me start with a tangent and a, and a bigger picture. We, we are a growing school district. We add 50 to 100 students every year. With the advent of internet technology and real estate websites that partner with school evaluation firms, schools, districts no longer have reputations to rely on. Homeowners, home purchasers can look at hard data about the quality of school districts. We are fortunate to have a very, very good school district. And people move to our community for our schools and bring with them their children to attend our schools. So we're a growing school district. As a board, we have to think decades down the line, especially as we are a landlocked community. The hospital property that, at the Berto campus is a, you know, once in generational, once in a lifetime, perhaps, opportunity to try to obtain at least an option on some land if we were ever to need to build more buildings. We have many elementary schools that are near or at their capacity. And in fact, we have many schools, period, that are near or at their capacity. Some have surrounding land to add additions on to, others do not. So we're beginning a process, as we discussed earlier, of putting out for bid to different demographers, the process of, of an extensive planning process of trying to predict enrollment going forward, to figure out what different elementary school districts these children would live in, what, what schools we can add on to, what we can't, what the capacities of each of our schools are. But this Berto property is an opportunity that comes up now. So we've been working with the Park District and the city to allow us an option at an uncertain future date, perhaps a decade or more from now, to potentially, if we were to enter into an, if we, if the Park District is successful with their negotiation with the city and if we are successful in our negotiation with the Park District, to enter into an intergovernmental agreement that would allow us at some point in the future to swap some land for this site at the Berto campus that would become Park District land. We hold open the, the option to perhaps, if we need to, to purchase a small amount of land there, if that is the difference between having a usable site for some future building project versus not. So there is no timeframe attached to this. It is just something we're pursuing. It's something I think we owe our community to pursue. So that's, that's in all of our discussions of land acquisition. You know, I think that kind of sums up if anyone has anything to add to that. Chris, go ahead.
I would just like to point out, as we've talked about in the past, this wasn't optional for us to enter into this discussion or at least talk about it because dropping 50-some-odd houses on that, on that plot of land has a material impact on our district and requires us to look forward like this. So, you know, it, it is something that we should do, that's what our job is as a board to do, but it's also something that we must do, just because of, if nothing more than to manage the impact of what's going to get built there.
Thank you. Yeah, in fact, there's a couple of other points that I would make. It's been reported recently, I think coming out of the Park District's meeting discussion, that, that field, you know, we're, we're interested in reconstructing a field school on this site. That is certainly one option that we have, but not necessarily an option that, that we're committed to. And again, there is no timeframe. You know, we have Lincoln School, which will reach its 100, the oldest part of which will reach its 100th birthday in the next very few years. And then Field School is a decade or two behind Lincoln. Field is, is not in need of a major renovation currently. It's, it's quite a functional school, but again, it's our job to look decades down the road. So, you know, I just wanted to, to point that out, that this, this is, there's no timeframe attached to this at all. It is simply an option that gives the board, depending upon what our greater plan calls for, perhaps a future option to have some land to, to build something if we were to need it. There's a long process that, that goes through here to, to make sure that we're, that we're making the best, best and highest use of, of that option. So, with that, are there any other board communications? Hearing none, the next on our agenda, completing our agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.